Call the meeting order, please. Call the roll.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Reno?
Here.
Dr. McFadden? Mr. Monk?
Here.
Ms. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Richman?
Here.
Ms. Walker? Dr. McFadden?
Here.
A call has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, as citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you stand, come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also, be mindful that you may not receive a response to your particular inquiries here this evening. We, um, be mindful, you have three minutes. And last but not least, I ask you to address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments. Second call, citizens comments. Excuse me, can you take the seat, please? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were a citizen. Citizen, walk it up on me. Don't get up on the stage. Don't get up on the stage with me, you know. Last call, citizens comments. Hearing and seeing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, under the action items tonight, Agenda Item 5 is the Consent Agenda under Item 5, or 5A, Approval of the Minutes. 1, June 15, 2022, Public Hearing on Proposed 2222-2223 School Year Budget. 2, June 15, 2022, Regular Meeting. 3, June 23, 2022, Special Meeting. 5B, Approval of Bills for Payments. 5C, 1, 5C, New Hires, 1 Administrators. A, Seminole Academy of Principal. 2, Seminole Academy, Physical Education Teacher, 1st Grade Teacher, 2nd Grade Teacher, 1st Grade Teacher, Kindergarten Teacher, Speech Pathologist, Peace and Speech Pathologist from Sun Belt. And Action Item 5, C3, Secondary Complex Math Teacher and Secondary Complex Social Studies Teachers. The Chair would entertain a motion relative to the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Reno.
Support.
Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6, under the action items, this is coming out of the Business and Finance Committee. I understand that, um, we want a couple of items removed and tabled to the work session for August the 11th. That I'm saying, table Item B, uh, which is the lease with Washington's, Washington School. And Item C, Settlement, uh, excuse me, correction, Item E, Settlement Agreed, Settlement Agreements, Cable TV Employees. So Chair would entertain a motion to table to August 11th, Item 6B, Lease for Washington School, and Item 6E, Settlement Agreement for Cable TV Employees.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Second, Member McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to table, uh, to the work session, August 11th, the lease for Washington School and the settlement agreements for cable TV employees? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
I apologize, I'm, I'm sorry, who?
It was moved, moved by Member Monk, second by Member McFadden.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the eyes carry the motion, motion carries. Now, Item 6 from the Business and Finance Committee, Item A, 2022-2023 Employment Contract Non Teaching Staff, Madam Superintendent.
I'm gonna, I will refer to the, um, the Finance Committee for this, for the information on this, but these are the employees of our district that are not part of the teaching unit. So this would be our business office staff and one of our principals, the pupil accounting person, and our assistant, um, to the, the board and, um, and myself.
The Accountability Officer.
Oh, yes, and the Accountability Officer as well. So these, um, our employees, they have all been evaluated, they have all had exemplary evaluations, and they have gone above and beyond this school year and other years as well.
So what is the recommendation?
Oh, the recommendation, I'm sorry, the recommendation is that the board approve the contracts for the, uh, the contracts for the non-teaching staff.
The recommendation is to approve the 2222, 2022-2023 Employment Contracts for Non Teaching Staff. The Chair would entertain a motion relative.
So moved.
Moved by Member Reno.
Support.
Second, Member Collins, are there any questions, discussions?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, Bill, I asked for the, um, the last couple of years.
I emailed two each of the committee members this morning.
Did you get it, Mr. Monk?
Uh, I didn't see it.
I didn't get it.
I have copies of what you asked for, I can, so I'll report out if you, is it okay with you, Mr. McFadden? So what came out of the Finance Committee was, the Finance Committee wanted to know what employee, what had happened to these employees for the last two years, that being, well, three, including the 2223 year. So that being the 2021 year and the 2122 year. So I did, and if you didn't get it, let me know, because I thought I'd sent it to you guys this morning.
I'm looking up on your email right now, and it, no, I don't see.
I don't either.
Didn't get it either? Huh.
No.
Okay. I only, I'm sorry, I only sent it to committee members, so there's only, but I do have copies of what I did. I don't know.
Six copies, that's what I did, so you might, some of you have to, you don't mind sharing with your neighbor, that would be, hopefully.
We can share.
Sorry.
I'll have to speak without it in front of me, but, so, this is really, there's six, you sure?
Yeah, I'll share with you.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
It's okay.
So, it's really, this is, this involves six employees, their titles are listed there on the left. And so for the 2021 year, for the employees who were, there's only two employees who are here during all those years and stayed in the same job and didn't have additional duties added, thus additional pay given to them. But those two employees are the first two. So in the 2021 year, they, this employee group, um, took an 8% pay reduction. In the 2122 year, that 8% was given back to them, but there was no pay increase over what it had been before the 8% reduction had went into place. In 2223, in May, the board was presented with contracts that were the same exact dollar amount as what the employees had received in 2122. And that was because at that point, we hadn't settled with the teachers' union and the budget hadn't been finalized. So then, what we're proposing is in the far column, the 2223 proposed, is a 4% wage increase. So you can see the history best for this employee group with those top two people on the list. You get down to the next one, in, in, in the kind of pinkish kind of shade, it tells you where people had either changed jobs and took on more responsibility and were given, you know, a wage increase because of the more responsibility. Uh, the administrative assistant to the superintendent had, um, their first year of full employment with the district was 2122. They were given a wage lower than the, um, 2223 approved because it was reflecting, um, probationary employment during a training period.
Right.
Um, the payroll and grants accountant moved during the 2122 year, took on more responsibilities. Same thing for the accounts payable and edu staff coordinator, and then the same thing for the director of pupil accounting, but their job duties, you know, additional job duties didn't take effect or won't take effect until this contract goes into effect that we're proposing. So to answer the question, the Finance Committee, it was an 8% reduction, give back the 8%, and then the same wage for 2122, and then, um, 2223, that was approved, was the same wage, and now what we're proposing is a 4% increase for this employee group. Why 4%? Other employee groups got amounts that were as big or larger than that and are getting some types of retentions or bonuses, and this group does not get any of that. They don't have steps in their contract like some employee groups do. They are once given a contract, the only way they get an increase is for the contract to be changed at this point where we propose what their new contract is for the new year. I believe, Mr. McFadden, that, does that provide the information you were looking for?
Yeah.
Give me history, is what I wanted to see.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I'm looking at these numbers. Let's just take the payroll grant and accountant, accountant. So in the span of, what, two years? This person had received from 2021 to the proposed 2223, this person's going to get a $14,000 raise.
But remember, if, if in 2021, we hadn't taken away 8% from that person, they really would have been making 69, so their salary would have been 69, then, so giving back that is what took them to 69,000, and then additional duties took them from 69 to 75,000 in 2121.
Okay, I mean, okay, but the bottom line is that they, they receive an increase of 14,000. Just hear me out. For the account payable on edu staff coordinator, it went from, from 2021 to 2223, they're going to receive an increase of $16,720.
Because we cut staff in central office, positions were eliminated and people picked up added duties. And the give back of the 8%, I don't know that you can count when you took money away from them, that that's an increase. I believe that first column.
Well, money was taken away because we had to balance the budget. Money was taken away from everybody because we was in a dire situation. So, so the same thing affects everybody across the board. It's not like one group was treated different from the other group. This board recognized that we need to get the numbers in line, and that's what we did across the board. What I'm saying is that now, we did what we did, we got a fun balance, so now, we're going to start giving back a lot of money that, in my opinion, that we can't afford because this has to be sustained every year after this. It's not like this is a one-time deal. This money has to be paid every year. And the same thing with the union, we gave back money, and we gave back a lot of money, so everybody's in the same boat. But these numbers, um, are troubling to me when, at our retreat, we said that we need to tighten the boat. And then these numbers, I think we also asked, Dave, that these numbers reflect the total benefit package, because see, these numbers only reflect the compensation as far as pay, but all of these employees, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong, all of these employees receive benefit package too.
Probably.
That's correct.
Okay. So these numbers are going to be even bigger than that.
But as we looked at other employee groups, we gave back money that was taken away from them in the past, yes, the finance of this district over the next two or three years are going to be a difficult road. Yes, that's true. That's true when we approved, you know, the agreements with the other employee groups. Yes, we're going to have to do things differently, but you also have to be able to retain staff. And when there is a list, if you go out on the Michigan School Business Officials website and look at the list of jobs that are available in these types of categories, it's very easy for people right now to move to someplace else. It really is. In, in a 4%, when there's no steps given, nothing but a straight 4%, while in, in past years, a 4% may have sounded like a lot, a 4% with today's inflation and that type of thing, and the way the employment market is, isn't really a lot, I don't believe. But yes, I concur that there is, financially, all the way across the board, we're going to have to look at doing things differently. But this group, at least two or three of them, are picking up or have picked up added duties in order to not fill positions that were in the, in central office.
I just go back to, I had a conversation with the superintendent, so if people start threatening to leave, we just throw money at them to keep them? I mean.
I don't believe that's what this is. I believe this is.
Exactly, because that's how y'all, that's how y'all brought it.
No, it isn't.
Yesterday, that's how you brought it to the, to the Finance Committee.
No, no.
You said we need to retain.
I said, that's a possibility if we don't approve it.
You said we, they need, we need to retain these people so they don't leave.
Yeah, but I didn't say anybody threatened to leave, I said there's a possibility they would. And I think this is being fair.
Okay. Tomato, tomato, okay. That's all, that's all I got to say.
Any additional questions, comments?
Yeah. Okay, for the, um, the second line item down, instead of me saying the position, second line item down, there was a large increase. Do we need to add another position or a, um, support staff for that, like a secretary or position or something? Because the question is, because I know a lot of these people are absorbing additional duties, and I don't want something to fall through the crack because, or, listen, let me, hear me out, I don't want something to fall through the cracks because that person decides to leave, there's no backup, and now there's two times as much work going to be put on someone else's shoulders. So is, do we need to hire more staff to fill in these positions?
As it relates to the second line item on, on there, I can't.
I mean, that's a good question, because, I mean, I understand the price is going, the price is what it is, I mean, what we offering is what it is. Because all the duties have been absorbed, and the last three positions being, last, top four, they got, they absorbing a lot of duties. And I don't want to get caught into position where somebody find a better job or something else, or what it might be. Something might happen direly, I don't know. And then we have to fill in that position. And here we are, running ragged as we are. And continuity is not a thing in this district because apparently, but I had to ask for this here because the continuity wasn't there, what happened two, three years ago. So my question is still going to be the same, do we need to hire additional people for this position? Or for any of the positions on here?
I can speak for what I believe is central office in the business office. I think we're adequately staffed. I think at times of the year, it gets busy, you know, end of the school year, end of the fiscal year. But I think also the superintendent and I have began to talk about, you know, what is, we all know that superintendent may be done at the end of June 30, 23, and we've started already talking about what is the right transition plan and what is the right staffing, and we'll bring that later. But I don't believe it includes more staff, it may be different positions become more hours or less hours, but I don't believe it needs to be a whole nother body, no. And Monique, I don't mean to speak for you, I mean, you, you can.
Well, I think we need to have some conversations with the business office and with the rest of the administrative team.
So I have a question, does all these employees work full-time?
Yes, they do, and they work 365 days a year.
361.
And I know this is not total compensation, uh, total compensation is about how much percentage additional, um, 7%?
That is really the big unknown factor there, that you'd have to go position by position, is what they do in terms of health insurance. Because full family health insurance, the district's contribution is slightly over $20,000. Two-person family is, two-person is right around $15,000, and single-person health insurance is right around $8,000. So there's a big difference there. We do contribute approximately 29% of their wages that goes to the retirement system. We do take 7.65% of their wage that goes to social security. Those are what makes up the benefit package. And that's across the board for any school employee that works for the school, the retirement rate, the FICA rate, the health insurance would be any employee group that gets health insurance. And those health insurance rates are actually not even the total cost of the health insurance, that's what the state allows us to pay in the hard cap. Every employee contributes a portion of their health insurance costs.
What's the percentage of this, uh, of this employee package right here? Is our operating budget?
Can you give me just a second?
You mentioned at the meeting earlier this week.
I told you what the, I told you what the wage increase was. Um, let me, just a second, let me do a little math here, real quick, 70, 146.
Yeah, but you got to figure in a benefit package also.
Right, but right now, I'll tell you what the wages are, 176.
This is just salary.
This doesn't include the.
No benefit package.
That's correct. No benefit.
To get, I mean, I've said this before at this table, for us to be looking at accurate numbers dealing with problems going forward, we need to be looking at total benefit packages, and those should be in the contracts. So the contract shouldn't just say compensation, it should say compensation plus benefits equal whatever that dollar amount is, 120,000, 110,000, 150,000, 170,000, because that's what we're going to be paying. This just will be paying salary plus benefits, and taxes, and, and all the above. So we need to be looking at accurate numbers.
That employee group represents right around, for wages, 2% of the totals, total district budget.
This, this group right here, right?
Mm-hmm, that wage. And that is the district's operating budget without the added ESRS money that's happened over the last two years. That is what our true operating budget would be if we don't have the ESRS funds included in it.
That's fine. So I know a lot of things are going to be taking place, and I know that these contracts have a date, a deadline, and a sunset, morning, whatever, sunrise and sunset. But when is the discussion going to be made, had with you and the superintendent or the business department on right sizing and right staffing? Because you say, this is the staff here, you don't know what it's going to look like down the road, we might have to hire a couple of people, might have to just change things around. I mean, when is that, when is that discussion going to take place?
I think that discussion will occur over the next, during this school year, this fiscal year, because there are going to be changes, we know there's going to be changes in, in central office, at least one that we know of, so.
So can we get a list of the job, the duties for each one of these?
Yeah.
And whatever the additional duties that they have, um, picked up or inferred, is that possible?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that's possible.
And are we having, or do we have any outside resource, um, any assistance from the ISD or anybody in the central office right now, or is this just all us right here?
This is all us.
It's all us.
As far as what you're looking at right here? The ISD is helping in, um, special at the time, at the moment.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns?
I got another question. The, uh, this contract, it has to be done by when?
This contract here is 7-1 of 22 to 6-30 of 23, so they're already in this contract, operating under the contracts that you approved in May, which were no increase at all. They were the same number that they would have been in the 2122 year.
20, okay.
Except for those people, well, yes, it's what's there on the sheet.
All right, I'm, I'm a little confused right now, so.
So is it 2122 or is it 2223?
They're operating under 2122, correct?
Actually, they're operating under the 2223 approved contract number, which.
Yeah, we approve these contracts already.
Yes, you did, and.
With no wage increase.
What we're doing right now is, we're approving a 4% rate.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Yep.
These contracts have been approved with the dollar amounts already.
The dollar amounts that are in the.
What happened with the wage re opener, now, we're going to approve these contracts with an additional 4% increase. That's what we do.
Only for salary, not on top of, so is it, so I'm asking, is it possible to get these numbers with the benefit package? To add, to see what the total salary plus benefits will be?
For each additional employee, sure.
For each position.
Okay, I ask that question because they operate now under approved contract of 2223. We want to basically amend the contract to add a 4%.
Correct. And why you approved it in May with no increase is because, one, the contracts expired 630, and you needed to have a new contract in place. And number two, the budget hadn't been adopted by that point, so we didn't have an adopted budget that included, I included in the budget, this 4% is included in the budget that you adopted in June, and so, and we settled with the other largest employee group in the district after that May date, and those two factors led to bringing these back with that 4% wage increase in there.
I have a question.
Yes.
When you supply us with these numbers with the benefit package, can you give a comparable with these positions in other districts? Because I'm looking at this last line item, this last contract, employee contract, and what they have absorbed. That's a big duty to absorb, so are we, are we fairly comparable to other districts, surrounding districts where these employees can go?
I think what will be difficult in that, not saying I can't do it, but we are the low, the smallest district in our region. So in many districts, those duties are not all combined under one position. Some of those duties are more responsible, some are less responsible, some pay more, some don't pay as much, and when you start combining them, because you're such a small district, and you have to have so few staff in central office, that they wear many, many hats. So yes, I can get data out there all the time, I don't know how comparable it will be for that reason.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yeah.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item C, Northside Productions, Madam Superintendent.
Northside Productions is the company that provides all of our technology services in the district, and this is a contract that has been worked out through, um, our business office and in addition through, um, through Northside Productions. So we went back and forth, and this was agreed upon by both parties. Bill, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, just that rate was proposed by Northside Productions. I did some research into that rate, talked to another local company, the rate that was being proposed was a reasonable rate, the difference is hours, um, number of hours it would take to do the, do the work was, it was different from the other proposal that I, that I went out and got, but when we come down to it, having the experience of somebody who's been here for all these years, and, and we are reducing hours, but, um, Northside Production believes that the hours that we've agreed to, and they were involved in, in, on looking at how many hours, this is a 3,000 total hour contract, it's $65 an hour for a $195,000 total contract, which is very close to what we have paid that company on average over the past four years.
And the recommendation?
The recommendation is that the board approve the contract with Northside Productions.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to the recommendation for the contract with Northside Production, recommendation is to approve the contract to Northside Production.
This, in addition, this is a one-year contract with two additional years.
Good point.
As an option added in.
A mutual agreement of the two parties at the end of each year, yes.
So sorry.
No problem. Chair is looking for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second by Member Collins to. Second by Member Collins to approve the contract to Northside Production. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing or hearing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Director Pen?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item D, Annual SLRF Repayment Application. Madam Superintendent.
Yeah, I'm gonna, um, this is for our bond and we are in the pay, we're in the situation where we are actually paying back our, our bonds. And we've been very responsible for this, Mr. Melching, does there are things that you would like to add?
Um, yeah, just that what we are paying back is actually, when you're in early years of a bond issue, you actually borrow from the school bond loan fund to pay your bond principal and interest payments. And then over the years, over the 30 years, if the bonds are outstanding, property tax values go up, you collect more money and you pay it back at the end. That's very common in school district borrowing. If you didn't do that, you wouldn't be able to levy an even number of mills for the 30 years. You'd have to levy high mills at the beginning and low mills at the end. So this is a very common state practice, most, all districts do it. We are lucky now that we are in the payback mode. So we borrowed on our borrowing and now we're paying back that additional borrowing we did because our taxes we collect are more than we need to, to retire our bonds that are outstanding. So we're starting to pay the state back from when we borrowed from them. We will pay them back, $1,324,180 is the estimated amount. We owe them about $13 million, so we're gonna pay back about 10% of what we owe them. Um, we will accumulate, or accrue about another $686,000 in interest. So our true balance will go down, that we owe the school bond loan fund approximately $600,000 during the current, the '22-'23 year. I know that's a lot confusing, right, but trying to make it as simple as possible. And this is something the board has to approve every year, then I just send it into the state. This is estimate of what we're gonna do. Then at the, when we get down to May of 2023, we'll see if that's how much extra we have. It should be very close. And then we'll pay them back after May, bond principal and interest payments are made.
Mr. President, I move to approve the annual SLRF repayment application.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Second, Mr. Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Director Pen?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item F, Signing Bonus, MCEA New Hires. Madam Superintendent.
So this is a, this is a retention bonus, not a retention bonus, I'm sorry, a recruitment bonus that we are paying to the new teachers at this time. I'm just, I'm thinking there's probably 19 teachers on that list. And for many of them, the recruitment bonus made a difference in whether they chose to come to Mount Clemens or not. So this is a $3,000 recruitment bonus. We have a letter of agreement that, with the MCEA, that myself and Mr. Rickman and Kristi Nickel will be signing this evening if approved by the board.
And your recommendation?
My recommendation is that the board approve the recruitment bonus for our new hires.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the signing bonus for the MCEA new hires.
Move by Dr. McFadden to approve the signing bonus for the new MCEA hires.
Support.
Second, Mr. Reno. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Director Pen?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yep, yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk? Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item F, Furniture Donation. Madam Superintendent.
So we are asking the board to approve the donation of some tables and chairs that we have in storage to, to, actually, Janine, Ms. Walker has brought this information to us. Normally, we should sell this to the highest bidder. We aren't in the process of going through that. We have the extra furniture and they need that. They are opening a school, but it's not a school that would be competing with us. It's for religious education that would be taking place in the evening. Ms. Walker, would you have anything to add to that? I know I blew it. I'm reading my notes going, I knew what I was writing yesterday, but.
No, it's all good. Um, I work for St. Peter Parish in Mount Clemens. And we have combined with St. Louis, St. Huber, St. Hubert and San Francisco to form something called the Family of Parishes. So we do religious education at night. And we are opening the old St. Louis School on Harper and Crocker to do our classes in at night. The upstairs, and although the school is in beautiful condition, it is furnitureless. So we are looking for tables and chairs for the classrooms up there. And I contacted Mr. Melching about purchasing it and then we got to this part of donating. So we are just asking for tables and chairs to furnish those for the kids.
If you don't mind, I had just a little bit. Board policy allows the superintendent to sell to the highest bidder or it allows for it to be donated to, to an organization at the superintendent's. How come it, why it's here at the table this evening is in tucking with the attorney. I wanted to check because one of Ms. Walker's position in this, in this. And number two, because it's a really, you know, it is a church. Wanted to make sure we were covering all our bases. And their recommendation was because of those two things, it be brought here and approved by the board. So that's why it's here this evening.
So what is the recommendation?
My recommendation is that the board approve the donation of the furniture to the religious ed group that involves many of the parishes in our community.
Heard the recommendation, you heard the explanation. Chair would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item F, Furniture Donation.
Mr. President, I move to approve the furniture donation to the parishes in the area. St. Pete, St. Hubert and all of them, St. Francisco.
Can move, is there a second?
Support.
Second, Member Reno. Are there additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? I just have one question. I understand the policy says we can sell or donate. I understand the relationship with Ms. Walker and this board and this district and the other entities. My question is, why didn't we sell it?
So you have to go out for highest bidder. You'd have to put it in some type of auction or some type of bid, whether that's an online bid or an auction and it would have to be sold that way.
Again, my question is, why, you know, we, we talk about needing finances. If this is, you know, if it generated $500, that's $500 more than we had.
The, the amount of this type of furniture that we have, my experience in doing auctions in a couple, three districts, a lot of times this type of furniture doesn't even sell. Or if it sells, it sells for a very, very minimal amount in very large quantities just because there's not a lot of interest in it. And that would be my answer. I mean, we absolutely could, and it's, you know, time of year. And when is the right time of year to do an auction? And what's it entail to pull together an auction? Yes, you can go out and find companies who will come in and inventory it all for you and sell it all and then take, you know, sit 17 to 20% of the profit or the take, you know, the sales and then give the district the rest. It's pulling all that together.
Thank you. Dr. McFadden.
Well, I approved this and moved it because I want to have a discussion anyway. Uh, what items exactly are we donating? Tables and chairs is my understanding.
Mm-hmm, that's, yep.
And what's the quantity?
Yeah, the quantity.
The, as we talked about that at the finance committee, we talked about adding quantity to this, to this. And we decided that because we don't know the quantity right now, it will be whatever the group, I call them the Family of Parishes. For lack of, that's the way it was worded in the, in the email. The Family of Parishes will tell us how many they need. I trust that they wouldn't come and tell us that they need more than they would need for the purpose of just taking them and then doing something else with them, so.
Right, exactly. And they'll be providing the, they will be carrying it away and their workers will be coming in to remove it from our property.
I would have no problem with bringing back when we know what that number is, a report to the board that tells how many chairs, how many tables, desks, whichever, an itemized list.
And these, these chairs and tables, are these coming from the old high school area? I mean, where are they coming from?
As I asked where they were and asked how many, Jay from ABM went and he said, his words were, really, we have so many that there's really too many to count. Unless you really want me to count that many, I'll go do it. But we have rooms and rooms full of them. And yes, as I understand it, it's coming from this building. I don't know that this building isn't housing tables and chairs and that type of thing that were in other buildings that we may be, you know, closed or that type of thing. And they're here, but they're coming from stockpiles that if I understand it correctly are in this building.
Donna, if you go on the third floor in the middle school, that's where we have.
We'll take you on a tour.
Well, here's, here's the thing, the reason I'm asking this question. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why I ask questions. This question is because we got the high school full of buildings with chairs and tables. We got other buildings, King and everything else. And I don't want to sound like we're having a fire sale and we're just, you know, throwing things out because we about to go, you know, one way or another. So that's why I asked the question. I mean, is these some chairs or tables that have been sitting around for a long time? And, and trust me, for St. Pete, I'd do anything for them. Um, St. Peter, St., all the parishes. But the question has to be the question because we're responsible for what we're doing today.
Right.
We giving away a lot of chairs and tables. I just wanna know, do you have an idea how many we gonna give away? Um, Ms. Walker, do you got an idea how many tables and chairs we probably be giving away?
Tables and chairs to fit 10 classrooms. The upstairs of St. Louis, so we're not looking at a monstrous amount, no.
Okay.
And as reported by Jay, these have been not used for many years. It's not like we just stopped using them yesterday or, you know, last week or last year. These are rooms that have been around full of this stuff for a while.
So above my cap, I was just looking at about 300 chairs, 300 tables for 10 classrooms. Average, give or take.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Director Pen?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
You know, I think it's a great idea and I believe in partnering, but I can't support this because of the way we were taking over the codes and the McComb, selling them to McComb by the parish. So I'm voting motion carries. Item seven, School Board Business. A, any NEOLA Annual Policy Forum and Golf Hour. Madam Superintendent.
I would like to, I'm gonna pass this over to Mr. Monk. This is the NEOLA golf outing and the policy forum that he wishes to attend.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Um, I sit as the policy chair. I think I've been doing a good job for the last seven years. And this is an opportunity for me to, first of all, go and be part of NEOLA's conference to learn about new upcoming policies and things of that nature and the process and procedures because that's kind of what I've done all my life. It's that even in the restaurant industry, I was responsible for writing policies and procedures for the restaurants. So this is kind of in my ram. So this is an opportunity for me to sharpen my policy too. And then you guys all, all y'all know that whenever I can go golfing, that's always a plus. So, um, I can kind of nail two birds with one stone. What?
It ain't been six months.
What?
Come on now. Don't you get out of board business and get hurt. Uh-uh, uh-uh. I can prove you going to the golf, I can prove you going to the forum, but. Okay, I won't golf, I just. So, yeah, that's, um, I wanted to, they do this every year and I, I wanted to attend to one. For the last three years, in the last three years, I've had surgery every year, so I wasn't able to. Yeah, we don't want it to fall for you. And so, but talking to some of my other board member colleagues that are going, um, I got, you know, fellow members at New Haven. Um, they said it's a great forum for policy. And also, the person that will be there for MESB is, I forgot her name, but the one who heads the policy for the MESB. So it's kind of like a conjunction, they'll be there. But it's, it's a great forum and it allows me to get more study time and points under my belt. So I can reach that level, Doc, that you and President is at, so. Because I'm old, he's older. Right, right, right.
No comment.
When is? Uh, when, when, I don't have the dates right in front of me.
I don't either.
I wanna say it's September, I think, or it's September or October. I believe it. Do you need to make a motion to approve it?
Yes, you do.
Uh, Mr. President, I move to approve the NEOLA Annual Policy Forum and Golf Outing. For Mr. Monk.
Been moved by Member McFadden to approve the attendance at the NEOLA Annual Policy Forum and Golf Outing. I think it's in Traverse City.
Yes.
And I have it as September 19.
September, September 19.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I will bring all of y'all back souvenirs.
Oh, heck, yeah.
Can you show me the registration form? Don't have golf.
Don't have golf check on there, right, right, right.
Special request for a meeting?
No, I don't, I don't need that. I got plenty of people I know that'll be on the golf board. And he can ride around, all that stuff. Long as they're on, they'll tell you. He might put a, put a putter in your hand. Right, that's it. One of your colleagues hit that ball a mile.
Any, um, additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Director Pen?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item seven B, MESB Summer, MESB Summer Institute. Madam Superintendent.
The, um, the Summer Institute, Dr. McFadden, do you have the dates on that?
Uh, end of August. Forgot exactly what dates, I think it was the 19th.
Kind of in a moment.
I know.
Okay, well, you got the floor.
I'll take the floor on this one. Um, Mission Social School Board Summer Institute, you know, they do training two or three times a year. They have the Summer Institute this year is in Grand Rapids. Uh, it's gonna be across the state a little bit, so I'm asking for approval to go to that. I will be taking CBA courses for the President Workshop, Advanced President Workshop. I'm not saying I'm sitting in that seat, but.
Hey.
Close enough to it, might want to learn about it. So, um, that's gonna be a two-day workshop, so.
Oh, yes, um, the, the dates are the 19th through the 21st, but the relevant classes to Dr. McFadden were the 20th and the 21st.
That's right.
If I'm not mistaken.
So I was, I was right, it's close, close enough. So, anyway, that's what I'm be doing. I won't be playing no golf or anything. Um, I'll be in class all day.
Oh, jeez.
I'll bring you my, uh, tag-in sheet when you know I'm there.
Again, I used to do that, I used to train that class, it ain't all day, okay?
It is now, though.
You're gonna have a good trainer now, it takes all day, right? And it is open to other board members, y'all want to go up there and learn something. Got more than just that CBA, CBA class. But I do want to get some more points under my belt and learn a little more things about board operations.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to the attendance at the MESB Summer Institute. Move. Move by Member Monk.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? I, I'd like to add that I strongly encourage my colleagues to take training. It's one thing to sit behind, sit behind the table and listen to what people say that have been through the training. It's a different thing when you go to the classes yourself and sit to the classes and get the information. I, I'm a big promoter and a big advocate of board members getting adequate training.
Um, I, I'm a big promoter and a big advocate of board members getting adequate training, because technically, as a board member, all you have to do is convince more people to vote for you than anybody else, and now you serve on a multimillion-dollar board with not knowing the process, not knowing your roles and responsibility, and trying to learn it through colleagues that are on the board that have been, been more seasoned and more veteran. But again, I'm a big advocate of board members being, taking the training classes, uh, and taking a training class, you will, you will walk away with a brand-new understanding of what your role and your responsibilities are as you serve as a seated school board member. So I'm a big advocate of training for school board members. Mr. Monk?
I concur with that, and just from, from my experience, from being on this board, this will be my eighth year, um, when you go to these conferences, not only receiving the training, you'll sit at different tables with different board members from different districts, and you would know or find out that some of these boards are dealing with the same things that you're dealing with, and you can get a different perspective, you can get different ideas. I know personally, um, I've brought back, talking with fellow board members from vast parts of the state, I've brought back some ideas to this board table, talked about it, and those ideas was put into place, and it helped us. So it's not only just for the training, you know, you can get around your other board members, I don't know the number, Doc, throughout the state, how many board members there are, but, you know, you, I mean, you're up there with everybody from, you know, Mackinac Island all the way down to, um, right at Toledo border, um, and on, on both coasts, so, you know, it's, it's, it's a valuable experience, and it helped me out personally tremendously in dealing with issues that we deal with here at this level.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Rina?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
And plus, I would like to see the Mount Clemens Board of Education get the award for having all seven of the school board members as certified CBA members.
There is a certification.
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Item Eight, informational items, the Business Committee. A, financial reports. Are any questions, comments, concerns on the financial reports?
What, you're probably questioning why don't you have a financial report? It's June 30th, the next financial report you get on the year that ended June 30th will be the annual audit that will be brought to you in October. Any questions? You have the check registered.
Thank you, Senator. Item nine, Superintendent's comments. I'm Superintendent.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to take this evening to introduce Mrs. Dia Bethel. She is here, Dia, would you like to come and maybe come up to the microphone for just a second?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to meet you, and I'm glad to be here. I'm excited about this school year, and I'm excited about this opportunity, beginning to meet some of the staff during summer school, as well as some of the families and some of the students, and I'm, I'm, we're going to do great things this year, and I'm really excited about it. Thanks for having me, and thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome to the class.
Yeah, Ms. Bethel comes to us from, um, she originally, she came from Redford Union, and prior to that, she worked at the Detroit Public Schools Community District. She was a master teacher in edu, in mathematics. She has 18 years of teaching in various elementary, middle, and high school settings. She was a middle school instructor, and she was an assistant and interim principal in Redford Union, so we are really happy to have her. The, when I called her references, what I heard mostly was just a lot of enthusiasm. She loves kids, which is really important to me, um, that our administrators really, really love our kids. She's very caring, very energetic, she's passionate, and the thing that really stuck out to me when I talked to all of her references was how she stays in touch and keeps those connections from people that she has known for years and had gone through classes or taught with, so all, everything was just very, very positive. We are very excited to have her. Uh, I am also, would like to welcome all of our new staff members who, uh, were, who were approved by the board this evening, and also to let you know that our back-to-school bash is August 23rd, Tuesday from 10:00 to 2:00. We have a lot to do. And those are my comments.
Thank you, I'm Superintendent. Item 10, committee reports. A, business and finance. Any additional information from the Business and Finance Committee?
No.
All right. Mr. Leninberry, take B and D.
I should switch these.
No, no report. That is the report, no report. Item C, curriculum personnel. Any additional information or any mission, information from the curriculum personnel committee?
Yeah, we just talked about the new hires, and, um, I think that was about it, it was a really short meeting, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, people, eight people, nine, and that was a short meeting? That was it.
Well, I can tell you a little bit about each one of them if you'd like.
No, no.
I did find out that one of them came from the school that I was at, but...
And we love her.
And I didn't know that until after that, yes.
Yeah.
Sure you didn't know that.
I didn't.
Sure, yeah, right.
She found out that, yeah, she found out at the meeting, yeah.
Any questions at the chair? Anything look forward to, Mr. Monk? Item E, policy.
Policy, the only thing we have to do, we have to do this, um, and it actually slipped my mind, we have to get, um, Ms. Thomason replaced in all the policies that she was the go-to person for the female side, so we need to give a thought to who we want to get that, and we need to, we don't need to do a first or second reading on that, that just need to come in as a amendment to that policy, and we need to get that done like ASAP before school starts. So we need to have that in place. Other than that, no.
Any questions at the chair? And Item F, Legislative Committee, we have not had a committee, uh, Legislative, County Legislative Committee meeting, which brings us to Item 11, Board Comments. Ms. Collins?
Um, one of my, it's kind of a comment, but also a request. I'd, I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Melching, we had a brief conversation regarding our athletic fund, um, at our last meeting when the budget was presented. Um, there's a significant amount of money in that fund that hasn't been discussed since then. Considering August 11th is the kickoff for sports, um, I'd like to get a breakdown of that fund and what those funds are earmarked for. That way, if some of our sports teams need some additional equipment, we can provide that for them. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Ms. O'Neal?
Um, just want to welcome Mrs. Bethel, thank you, and all of the other teachers that, um, we have hired, so, um, just want to say welcome, and thanks for coming.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. Mr. Rina?
Yep, similarly, I would like to express a very, very happy welcome to all of our new hires. Beyond that, just, you know, keep, I hope everybody continues to enjoy their summer. Twenty-two, twenty-three school year is going to be here sooner than we know. Let's get ready.
That wasn't nice.
I've been working all summer, too, so...
Thank you, Ms. Rina. Ms. Walker?
Again, welcome, Mrs. Bethel. It's wonderful to have you here. We're excited. Um, welcome to all the new hires, and thank you very much to my fellow board members for the donations, the tables and chairs. Know that they'll be put to good use by some absolutely fabulous kids. So those are my comments. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. Bethel, welcome. Um, I read your resume thoroughly, so I'm looking forward to, um, the leadership and the discipline that you're going to install in the seminar and improvement that you're going to make over there, so I'm looking forward to seeing that for, for, for our kids. Um, other than that, um, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden?
Well, Ms. Bethel, Mrs. Bethel, I can't see you, go ahead. Go on, get up. That's, it's all right, go on, get up. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to the club.
Thank you.
It's going to be a good time, too, I think you'll enjoy it. Uh, and all those teachers, you got to, there's a new teacher going to break in, too, so welcome them. Um, we got a lot going on. We had a lot of conversations at the Finance Committee, and we talk a lot about money. Yeah, it's not about us giving away money, taking money, or not keeping money, but we know what's coming down the road, and we're just trying to be diligent. So if it sounds like we beating people up around here, it's not, it's not the case, really not. Uh, we got a lot of big things coming up, um, because we got to, one fall now doesn't mean what's going to happen later on, because it's coming. We're just trying to get ready. But we are looking forward to the new school year, fall and the sports, so when the sports season start, please come out and support. Barracudas are playing, we got a good, nice, nice high school football team, so come on out. Uh, Mr. President? That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, we're about a month from school ending, and about a month, we're going to have the back, the, back-to-school bash, and then about 10 days or so after the back-to-school bash, we're back at it full-blown. Um, today is what, June the 21st? I mean, July the 21st?
July 20th.
July 20th, thank you, sir. Seems like last week that we were having the commencement exercises, and soon as you know it, it's going to be time to open the doors back up, so time waits for no one. Um, for those of you who have the distinct pleasure and advantage to have summer vacation, uh, please enjoy it, uh, and enjoy it to the fullest, you know? Borrow somebody's convertible and let the, the wind blow through your hair, you know, take a cruise, go somewhere, or just enjoy lemonade in the backyard, but, um, uh, because time is slipping away quickly. Again, it seemed, seemed like yesterday, we were graduating kids, and it's going to be, seem like next week, we're bringing kids back in for the 2020, 2022, 23 school year. So enjoy your time away, students, enjoy your time away, I know you will, um, but in a short period of time, we're going to be back up here, we expect to see you fired up and ready to go, uh, for the 2022, 2023 school year here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. If you're looking for a good place to bring your kids, come check us out. Um, we can guarantee, uh, that your students would be more than a number, uh, in, in this You haven't heard, uh, any true comments, or hysteria comments about gang violence, um, other weapons charges, um, weapons lockdown, drug raids, and all those other things that you may hear about that are going on in other school districts. We are fortunate here that we haven't had, uh, those types, types of issues, uh, on a, on a wide-scale basis or, or on a frequent basis. We have, we do have our challenges and our issues like every other district, but if you're looking for a good place to bring your students, consider bringing them to the Mount Clemens Community School District. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Member McFadden. Call a roll.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Rina?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meetings adjourned, 6:34 in the P.M. Thank you. 7:34 in the P.M. Thank you.
You're getting that.